I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record reflect that four of us are here. Commissioner Lenzmeyer is not able to be here today. Members, we've got our agenda in front of us. Dr. Williams, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There's no changes, Madam Chair, no additions.
Okay, members looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Consent agenda. Members, are there any items that you wish to see pulled? And if not, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, members of the public. We do want to remind you that our staff thoroughly vet all items on the consent agenda. Our members all look at it. We have discussions with staff where there needs to be questions. So we want you to know we take looking at those items seriously. We're going to move on to public works. Ms. Teich.
Good morning, commissioners. Jody Teich, county engineer. My first item begins on page thirty-six of your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings related to SP zero seven three dash seven three three dash zero zero six. That's the County Road one thirty-three reconstruction between County Road seventy-five and Fifteenth Avenue in St. Joseph. This is a federal project scheduled for 2024. Two of the nine parcels remain unsigned. We're dealing with corporate, excuse me, we're dealing with corporate offices on these two parcels. Locally, there is a lot of support for this project, but just to move the process along so this project can stay on schedule, we're asking the board to adopt the resolution found on page thirty-seven of your agenda packets.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no questions or discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you. My next item is on page thirty-nine of your packets. I did hand out a bid summary before the board meeting. I'm asking the board to authorize award of the contract for SAP zero seven three dash six twelve dash zero twenty-three. That's the County Road twelve reconstruction from County Road one eleven near Richmond to the southeast limits of St. Martin. We opened bids on March twenty-eighth. We got several bids. The low bid was Knife River. Their bid was six million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, and that's about just over eighteen percent under the engineer's estimate. So we are asking the board to award that contract to Knife River.
Commissioner Bertram.
Madam Chair, just a question. It's good news is it's certainly eighteen percent under estimate, but when we do the estimates, this is, I think, the second or third estimate that it's been significantly under, which is good news. But are the estimates being, you know, over exaggerated, I guess?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bertram, we do set those unit prices very early in the year as we're completing those plans, and it's based on what we're hearing, what fuel, where fuel prices are. And so while we could certainly be adjusting those estimates as we're getting bids in, sometimes when bids are opened in January, we get those very low bids when contractors are looking for their first bids of the year. Given that this was the end of March, we weren't as confident that we were going to get as low of bid prices. It appears that contractors are still hungry for work. We would be more concerned if it was one bid that was very far under, but as you can see, we've got bids, kind of the whole spectrum, all of those. We've got some that are significantly overestimate, obviously, as well. But again, we don't typically adjust those as those bid dates move closer and closer to the construction season, just because we always assume we're going to get better bids at the, you know, early in the bidding season, January, February, but as we get into March, we're concerned that those schedules are starting to fill up.
And Madam Chair, Jody, part of the question is, if I'm a contractor and I see that, you know, the estimate's much higher, you know, we don't want to encourage contractors to think, well, we can bid this a little bit higher because the estimates are higher. That would be my only, and that's getting into it a little bit, but that's just a question.
Well, a related question I had, which you partially answered, which was how much of this is that prices are stabilizing, and that's a good thing. And then how much of it is, it was early in the year with the estimate?
It could be that we're still, like I said, early enough in the year. We don't release our full engineer's estimates. We will give a range because contractors will need that range to start preparing to get a bid bond. So we will give a range. Generally, when it's this high, it'll be about, you know, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, but obviously, that certainly didn't impact our lowest bids on this.
So you're looking for a motion to accept, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
I'll second that with a comment, Jody.
Thank you for the second.
Just looking at that, it's amazing to see the low and the high there and the discrepancy between the two. If they're looking at the same project, it's incredible to see that kind of distance. But on the positive side, it's nice to see the number of people that actually did make an opportunity to put in a bid. That shows that there's a competitive market that at least, you know, it's, we're not like we're looking for one or two contractors that are going to have us at their mercy.
And related to my earlier comments, we have heard through, you know, the industry that those highest two bidders have a lot of work already, bid it nonetheless, obviously, to certainly make a profit. We always have concerns with contractors who have a full schedule that still bid, because if they get our work, somebody is going to get delayed. So certainly, we're happy that there are contractors that still need work to fill their schedules.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the contract is awarded.
For my next item, on page forty-one of your agenda packets, I am asking the board to approve agreements. There are two agreements included with XL Energy to relocate poles. These are for a transmission line. They are currently located just outside of our existing right-of-way in a private easement, and this is in preparation for a County Road two reconstruction project we have planned for 2025 between the Sauk River on the south side of Coal Spring, south down to County Road twenty-one. This project has federal funding on it, and in the survey, we did observe that these XL Energy poles are outside of our existing right-of-way. So because of that, we have to pay for the pole relocation. And the two agreements, they have two separate segments basically in relation to their Wakefield substation, which is why XL Energy wants us to be in two agreements. Between the two agreements, there are a total of fifty-three poles that will need to be relocated, and because of that relocation, there are some additional poles at the dead ends that need to be installed. So as you are probably aware from looking at the agreements, the price tag on this is two million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars. Yes, we're not happy about this. We really have no choice. These poles are located about thirty-six feet from centerline. When we do this reconstruction project, because of the speed of the roadway and for safety reasons, the standards that are set up, those poles need to be located no closer than forty-two feet from the roadway centerline. So we have no choice but to relocate these poles. So this is certainly an added construction cost, but if we are going to reconstruct this section of County Road two, we need to move forward with this. The other bad news related to this is this is just for the transmission line. There is a distribution line that is also in private easement along this road that will need to be relocated. That is generally significantly less expensive. They are small, smaller poles. They aren't, you know, the large structures like the transmission lines have, but that agreement doesn't need quite as much lead time. The reason we're asking for this now is because there is a significant lead time on those structures and on the design. Our initial payment, which is based on the estimate, is for the engineering, the design of it, and to begin to put in those orders for those materials, the initial payment would be nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. So I'm asking the board begrudgingly to approve these agreements so that we can move forward and get XL Energy moving on the process of relocating those transmission poles so they won't be in the way for construction.
So I think, I got a chance to talk with Ms. Teich yesterday, and thinking about the conversation we had about monarch butterflies and words that we use to describe that process. This really does, I mean, we don't have a choice on this, and it's very frustrating. I'm wondering, I know other members are going to have questions. Can you talk about, just from a prevention for the future, are there opportunities perhaps to change our ordinance to make sure that we don't face this in the future with any right-of-ways? And how many other possible situations could we be facing with this?
There are several areas throughout the county. Certainly, a lot of them don't rise to this cost level. County Road seventy-one that we reconstructed in 2021, as an example, Stearns Electric had poles in a private easement, far less expensive, which is why the agreement did not necessarily need to come to the board. This one, obviously, even if there wasn't a limit on what I could sign off on, I would want the board to be aware of this regardless. So there are several areas throughout the county where those utility lines purchase private easement immediately adjacent to our existing right-of-way. There are several counties throughout the state, I have found out recently, that as part of their land use ordinance, they require that any private utilities, especially those that are above ground, that are placed outside of right-of-way have to be a minimum distance from the roadway centerline. So as an example, I know one county has, it has to be a hundred feet from centerline. Now, there may be adjacent property owners who don't like that option, because utility companies can certainly use eminent domain authority as well if it's for a public purpose. Even if it were fifty feet away from centerline, a minimum of fifty feet away from centerline is part of a possible ordinance change, that would be outside of our clear zones, assuming we kept the same centerline. It wouldn't necessarily put that undue burden on the adjacent property owners, and then we would be able to potentially undo our engineering and our design around those power poles. So that's something that I mentioned to Commissioner Clark, that I have been meaning to talk with our environmental services department about potentially introducing an ordinance change that would take that into account, and that certainly brought that to the top of mind when we got these agreements from XL Energy.
And it sounds like something that would be a great conversation to be having. Commissioner Persky, and then I think Commissioner Bertram.
Jody, so are we actually acquiring additional right-of-way or only a utility easement with that price?
This price does not acquire, doesn't pay for any right-of-way. This is just the cost of relocating the poles. In addition to this cost, we'll obviously have our construction cost and the cost to expand our right-of-way to a minimum of fifty feet each side of roadway centerline. So they would be located in our new right-of-way once we purchase that, a minimum of forty-two feet away from our roadway, proposed roadway centerline.
Okay. And then a question between right-of-way and utility easement. If there's poles in a utility easement, is that tillable then for the property owner opposed if it's in our right-of-way?
Ms. Teich.
I have not seen or read very closely some of those easements. I do think that the utility companies, depending what types of utilities, whether it be buried or above ground, they are probably less concerned with planting around those power poles than we are with planting within our right-of-way because of the erosion that it could potentially cause and run off into our ditches. So it's possible, depending how the easement language is written.
Mr. Bertram.
Madam Chair, Jody, thank you for recognizing, yeah, this is terrible. I mean, this is just offensive to me. Have we done this before? Has the county had to do this previous to this?
Ms. Teich.
We have, excuse me, we have had to pay. This is the largest price tag we've ever seen.
You did mention that, I'm sorry, but how many times did we do it?
And this is an estimate. In my time at Stearns County, which is a long time, I'll admit, it's in excess of twenty years, we've probably had to do this a half dozen times.
Mr. Bertram.
And Madam Chair, so it's our ordinance. I think the chair raises a good point. I mean, do, should we be looking at changing that ordinance? Those poles have been there for sixty years, maybe different poles, but they've been there because when I was traveling back and forth to St. Cloud State, that's the road I took. And, you know, they've been there for a long time, so suddenly, now it's an issue. I mean, I don't ever remember anybody hitting a pole. Somebody went down that ditch by Lipsmires, but other than that, I've never heard. So is our ordinance too restrictive and requiring that? I've got several questions. And then the other thing is the easements. The easements are with the landowners from the utility, right?
Correct.
So utility, and then is, do the utilities pay that one time or ongoing?
Ms. Teich.
Again, I don't know the exact language of the easements, and I don't have one in front of me, so I apologize for that. Generally, I would assume, and I'm making the assumption that it is much like when we buy an easement where it's one time. We buy a roadway easement and basically pay that property value on a square footer per acre basis. So I would assume that it's very much the same where it's a one-time payment for them to have that easement across, that strip easement across the property. I'm going to go back to the clear zone issues. There are certain standards set up for state aid and federal aid projects, and actually, we use those standards on all of our roads regardless of where the funding is coming from, because those standards are based on safety measures. And certainly, the clear zone on a fifty-five mile an hour road with the amount of traffic that County Road two has, they figure forty-two feet from centerline. Within that distance, generally, vehicles can regain control or come to a stop before they hit a fixed object. Maybe we have been lucky thus far on this road. I don't know off the top of my head exactly when this easement was purchased, but we did verify that there's actual easement there. They weren't accidentally placed a little bit too far from our centerline, thinking they were in our right-of-way. So it's, again, the clear zone, it's based on safety measures. And because we don't have ten thousand vehicles a day on this road, you know, it may be, like I said, luck that nobody has hit a pole. I don't know when those poles were replaced and placed in this exact location. You know, they maybe at one point were twenty-five feet from centerline or thirty feet just inside of our right-of-way, and they decided when they replaced them that they wanted to place them in this private easement. It is relatively common for XL Energy to do that when they're replacing transmission poles, because transmission lines are far more expensive for them to move. If they're within our right-of-way, they have to do that at their cost. Now, I do want to point out, if we do an ordinance change, obviously, it's not retroactive. So we may still have areas out there where we have poles located in private easement from before an ordinance change was enacted, and so we may still see some of these agreements, but at least it would prevent, in the future, us having these same issues.
And Madam Chair, is the...
Yeah, and just really quickly, that's part of the reason why when we were talking, it's like, I think the board's going to want to hear that we've got a potentially an opportunity to change. So yes, on this point, and then just you know, to Commissioner Notch.
I have two points, and I can make one now and one later. So the easement then, if XL, so the county's going to acquire easements?
Correct.
So then, when the poles, who's, who's got the easement then when the poles are moved? Is it going to be within the county easement or the utility easement, or both?
Ms. Teich.
Generally speaking, the county easement. So we will buy easement and basically pay that full property value to the property owners, and then XL Energy would place their poles within that fifty-foot minimum right-of-way each side of centerline.
So the property owners, Madam Chair, will have been paid an easement from the utility and will get paid an easement now from the county?
Correct.
For the same purpose, okay? And then the last point is, when I brought up the CapEx thing, and everybody seemed to not want to, you know, touch XL in any way, shape, or form, we're allowing them to access our county right-of-way for nothing. And I think that's a mistake, and I know other counties have charged for that, and seeing this, over fifty thousand dollars a pole, plus what the additional, I don't know why we're not charging them for the CapEx project, where they're placing utilities on our right-of-way, township's right-of-way, I think we really need to look at that, because again, fair is fair. I mean, oftentimes, the rural electrics, to my knowledge, a lot, you know, certainly charge something, but they're very cooperative. They work with townships, they work with counties. I mean, we're all serving the same people. This is, this is really unfortunate, I think. And then the other thing is, on ditch projects, when they went down ninety-four, as I'm trying to catch up with Randy and Chad on ditches, I'll think ditches, they just, they just put utility poles up and didn't get permits or anything, and then we had to go back and try to get something for that or whatever. But again, it goes both ways, and sometimes they have to feel it to hear it. So if there's a way for us to go back in that CapEx stuff, I think this is legitimate, seeing this.
So Ms. Teich, and then Commissioner Notch, and Commissioner Persky.
We do charge permit fees to utilities that are accessing our right-of-way. It is on a per road and per mile basis. So every time they cross the road, it's a permit fee, and we require them to have a bond on file with us. The permit fees are set by the county board, and we charge the same permit fees, whether it is a mega company such as XL or if it is a small rural cooperative. It's the same utility fees that we charge. When they relocate, when they do maintenance, every time they do something, every time they touch that utility in our right-of-way, we do charge a permit fee. Again, I, it's not added up to two point seven five million, certainly, but we collect a significant amount of permit fees from companies such as XL every year.
But Madam Chair, it's a permit fee, it's not an easement fee or any, it's a permit fee, so you're just pulling like a permit. They're not, we're not pulling a permit, we're paying for something different than a permit. That's the comparison, I guess I'm looking for. Let's just look into that if we can.
Ms. Teich, perhaps it might be worth us asking our county attorney's office about whether or not there's an opportunity to charge differing prices depending upon whether the type of utility. There may not be, but it would be worth finding out. Commissioner Notch, thank you for being patient.
Sure, thanks, Madam Chair. And in addition to that, you gotta remember, it's not just the electric. You also now have fiber. You have phone company that buries cable in that utility easement that is in the right-of-way. You know, so I'm guessing they're all getting permit fees to work in those right-of-ways. The other thing I was going to mention on these, going back to these easements, I know way back in history, a lot of times, these were blanket easements. So like in my place, they didn't specify fifty feet from the road right. It was the whole property, so they could, you know, run their lines wherever they wanted. Now, in the last probably ten years, a lot of these utilities, if they have to come and do work, they're redefining those easements, similar to, you know, what Jody mentioned, where they're in the township right-of-way or the county right-of-way, because otherwise, you know, oh, we need a new line. We'll just cut across your eighty-acre field because that would be the shortest route. So a lot of those utilities now are trying to limit those boundaries and put them in right-of-way versus just wherever they want to put it. So, you know, that's as little history I know on utility easements.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Persky.
Just, first of all, one thing is, we have an issue out at Fruit Farm Road with St. John's putting their poles, relocating them, and that's going to come to the board shortly. It was that planning commission this past week, so hopefully trying to resolve that. That's coming in the future. But I want to apologize, just because, Jody, I'm trying to understand this for a minute, and that would be, how is it that we're responsible for that utility easement opposed to, I always thought that when a utility company came in, that they were responsible for acquiring that easement, and that's really not our problem. How is it that this is our problem?
Ms. Teich.
We need to purchase additional right-of-way to be able to accommodate our ditches, our wider shoulders, and we need that clear zone, forty-two feet each side of centerline. So we would need to, even if there were no, no poles anywhere near this road, we would need to purchase that easement. And then, by state statute, we have to allow public utilities within our rights-of-way. Now, because they are on private property and not located within our right-of-way, whereas if they are permitted on our right-of-way, it's very, it very explicitly states, we tell them they have to move because of a road project and they need to move. However, because they're on private easement, we don't have that. And so they've purchased that private easement. Now, we're telling them they're too close to the road, we're going to purchase additional right-of-way. So because of that, it's similar to if a property owner has trees on their own property. So because of that, it's similar to if a property owner has trees on their own property, we have to pay for them if we need to remove them to accommodate our road project, or if they need to relocate something that's on their private property and not within our highway easement, whether it be a garden, some landscaping, we have to pay them to relocate that if they choose to relocate it, or we sometimes include it in the contract.
So the precipitating event is that we need to acquire more land, and because we need to get more space, we need, we need more space that, and this is on private land, that's why we need to do it.
Correct.
Absolutely frustrating as it is, Commissioner Notch.
Well, I, I guess the only other option is you just reconstruct it the way it is, correct?
And we would have to give back the federal money, and then we wouldn't be able to use state aid money on it.
Really, that's what we're looking at, is you leave it the same and give the money back? Or we update it? And, and I don't know, Jody, if you can mention, so County Road 157 is kind of the same thing. You have a narrower right of way, correct? And those poles are close, but the county's got to buy the easement and...
Correct. And in that particular case, County Road 157, XL Energy did attempt ahead of our project to go out and purchase private easement outside of our right of way to relocate those poles. And so we are very fortunate. We encouraged XL Energy to hold off. They wanted to relocate those poles, but the property owners pushed back a little bit and did not want to sell those, that easement. So although the property owners could have gotten paid twice for the same strip of land, they thought that we could have a little bit more control. And we have been able to work with XL Energy in that particular case and get them to move some poles to the opposite side of the road so they weren't so close to homes. And we're working with them on that process for them to be located within our right of way. But yes, 66-foot right of way, 33 feet each side of center line, and now they have to move them, but because they were within our existing right of way, they have to do that at their own cost.
So you're asking us to approve this. I think any motion based on our conversation would be at kindness, a reluctant motion, maybe a frustrated or stronger words motion. Is there a motion?
And Ms. Madam Chair, before the motion's made, what if we didn't pass it?
That's what Steve was just talking about.
Well, I didn't get that, I mean, I didn't...
Ask it again, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I didn't, it wasn't deep enough for me.
It was pretty deep, but you might have been not quite catching it, so go ahead.
Sometimes it takes me twice to hear something.
You might have been thinking about something else, it's good.
So I'm going to give a little bit of background before I answer that. County Road Two is a minor arterial roadway. It obviously runs north to south, all the way from our South County line up to near the Rice Bridge, County Road One. So it's a minor arterial, carries a significant amount of freight, agricultural commuter traffic. So that's why we're proposing to reconstruct it as very narrow shoulders through part of it. So if we did not agree to this, we would be giving back about $1.5 million in federal money, and we would not be able to use state aid money to reconstruct it. So we would basically be resurfacing it. It would still have the narrow shoulders. Portions of this have very narrow ditches, which it's sandy soil, so for drainage, it's not as big a deal, but it is a big deal related to snow storage when we actually have a real winter. So we want those wider ditches, we want the wider shoulders to accommodate the freight, agricultural, and commuter traffic. And then the wider shoulders are also something that gets requested a lot in our rural areas for walkers and bicyclists.
And Madam Chair, I assume, can we express our concern to XL? Mr. Asenoff retired, I think most of us know Ms. Schmitz's replacement, but I don't know if we'd contact her, government relations, or someone else, but I think I'm going to vote no only to send a signal that they need to know that this conversation happened and do they want to be partners? And then that CapEx thing, I really want to follow up on that.
So two things before you answer that. One is, we could just be voting this down today because I think all of us would like to send a signal. So a question I have is, what are our ways to send a signal to them? And then, just to circle back on the CapEx, the pieces about us not doing is, somebody else is going to determine what that pathway is. What we get to determine is by our ordinance is, is a different matter. So that was a, that conversation was about something else. Certainly, your questions today to me are very relevant to what we're, what might happen moving forward. So how are, what are our ways of sending a signal? What is our deadline for this? Because if you tell us the deadline isn't quite right this second, you might be finding that this goes down today. And I know Commissioner Lipsmire isn't here, but sometimes, you know, coming back is, but we know that it's not you that, XL is going to get hurt in this. That's part of our problem, right? It's not XL that gets hurt in this.
So Madam Chair, the reason we're bringing it to you now as opposed to, and believe me, we have had discussions, and so the contact people certainly know we are not happy about this. The reason we're bringing it out, it's, we are about 52 weeks out from a build on a transmission line. I'll bring you back, anybody who might remember, there was a transmission pole on our right of way on County Road 186 in Sauk Center, right near Highway 71. And they just, again, long lead time, but it was on our right of way, so it wasn't at our cost, and they didn't move the pole. And they wouldn't move the pole, and they wouldn't move the pole, so we put Jersey Barrier around the pole because the rest of the road was reconstructed. And as part of their permit fees, we went back after them for our additional contract costs because of that delay. Well, those delays, and that was a long time ago. I think that project, I want to say, was about the mid 2000s. I'm testing my memory here, like 2004, 2005 time period. It's, it takes even longer now. They obviously send out their design, they've got, and then to order the, basically the poles and all the hardware that goes with them. So we're looking 52 weeks out. So we wanted it, we want them to be relocated by the end of April of next year so that if we can have that early bid opening, we can be out there, we can be trimming trees, we can, if we have a nice spring, we can potentially be starting work in April. We want that possibility. So I certainly am going to encourage you to do this now. I will not be at the next board meeting, so I did not want to put this on the agenda when I was not going to be here. We could certainly delay this to the last meeting in April. I'm asking the board to approve it very begrudgingly, reluctantly, but I am asking the board to approve these agreements, and we can draft a letter for the board chair to sign to send to XL Energy, talking about the extreme costs associated with this. As a side note, I know that Benton County is dealing with the project. One pole needs to be relocated, that one pole is a million dollars. So part of me thought, maybe this is a bargain? I say that jokingly, of course. I don't think this is a bargain. But, so Benton County is dealing with this issue on a roundabout that they are building, and I know they are about as pleased as this county board is today with their cost as well.
So Ms. Tyke, and obviously, to go with what the will of the board is, a question I have is, what if we did such a letter very quickly and we held off on either moving on this or we vote it down and we come back? I mean, are we going to have any impact on them? I, I, I mean, I'm just wondering, I think, you know, part of the question is, what, what can we do, whether it's, it relates to this project or to a future one? You know, we know we've possibly got a tool of changing an ordinance, we can relook at our fee structures, et cetera. I am concerned about, given what you're saying, you are straight up, you are frugal, you cannot be, you're telling us you're unhappy about this. But if we did a letter first, would that impact anything? Or what's your recommendation, knowing you'd like this, us to vote on it today?
Madam Chair, I, I would guess, if I drafted a letter and had it to you tomorrow to send, it, and this is a guess on my part, so I'm not going to pretend that this is accurate, I would venture to guess that it would be no less than a month before you might get a response. Whether that response is meaningful, I don't know. While locally, the, our contacts understand our concern with these kind of costs, we will be dealing with the corporate office, and these prices are set forth by corporate offices. I, I personally, I've obviously been wrong before, I don't feel it's going to have an impact on this particular project. I do think, regardless of if the board approves this or not, a letter should be sent just to make the point, and if enough agencies make that point, perhaps it might do some good. I, I don't know.
Okay, with some follow-up perhaps, Commissioner Persky.
Madam Chair, I like your idea of maybe sending a statement to XL. I, I think oftentimes, they come to us and ask us to work in good faith and work reasonably with them. I think this could be an opportunity for us to reciprocate and do that with them and say, hey, we, we don't appreciate what the situation is, you know, could you give us some assistance in making this more palatable?
Perhaps with us working with their intergovernmental affairs.
And Madam Chair, again, I know this makes Jody uncomfortable, it's not your deal, as the chair has pointed out. However, we've all dealt with XL on different things. They were not going to have a public meeting in Kimball, and that's where the major CapEx thing is coming through. I made several contacts, and months later, or a month later, they had a meeting in Kimball. So their gut reaction is always no. I mean, that's a, that's just what it is. And I think if we deny this, I wouldn't, moving forward, I'd say, deny it, send the letter, we'll wait, and maybe sometimes, if we're going to spend, you know, $50,000 a pole, if we lose state aid or what have you, again, let's talk about the ordinance, then maybe we need to go a different way. But I'd like to have them make the presentation, not you, because they're asking for it. And again, we're serving the same people. We're having this with solar, they're not getting back to the solar applicants in proving, it, it, it's become like a norm, and we can't just bend over and take it. I mean, we've got to make a point once in a while, in my opinion. So I like the idea of denying it, sending the letter, and then reconsidering it at some future time.
Commissioner Notch.
So, Jody, if I have this right, if, if that would be the case, it, it's still no skin off of their game because if we're going to redo the road, we, we're still going to have to, then your option is, we still end up buying easement, or we leave the road the way it is and nothing else, it's just reconstructed the way it is? Because, you know, if you're going to give up the state and federal dollars, do you still have to extend the easements? So you're still going to deal with XL down the road?
Ms. Tyke.
At some point, the road bed is going to, and it's at that point where its usable life of the actual construction, it, it's obsolete for the traffic it carries. So our option is to not use state aid money, not, you know, basically give back the federal money, which doesn't work great for us when we apply for future federal money, and then just resurface the road. It will continue to have narrow shoulders, the ditches will be very small, will have some drifting issues, and we just continue in that manner. I will point out that the section of County Road Two south of here, from County Road 21 down south to Watkins, we just got some federal money for that project as well for 2028. So we may likely be dealing with this again. So again, we would lose that additional revenue, and so we would have to change the whole nature of this project.
Commissioner Notch.
So Madam Chair, with that in mind, maybe then the thought process is, let's get this approved so this can go ahead, and maybe we can readdress our ordinance before the second half of this road project comes about?
Ms. Tyke.
The one caveat I want to put out there is that those utilities that are currently 36 feet from center line, when we have a 33-foot right of way, if they're already there, this ordinance would only impact future pole locations. So it would not be able to go back to all of those that are currently in private easement and just make them assume those costs. At least, I assume there's no legal way to do that.
So on, Madam Chair, so on the 28, 20, 28, the rest of the way to Watkins, even if you change the ordinance, it wouldn't change anything?
Correct.
Right, so my understanding, Ms. Tyke, is us changing the ordinance would impact future ones that don't already, I mean, it's, it's, anything that already has poles not far enough back, we still have a problem. But in the future, it could actually help us with where they choose to put, put poles on private property because they, that agreement would have to be further back than it does right now because we'd have an ordinance that would require that. Is that correct?
Correct. As long as those poles are on private easement. If they're within our existing right of way, they have to relocate at their own cost.
Mr. Schreifels.
Well, I'm just wondering if we could ask Jody, right now, we're using sales tax dollars on county state aid roads already, right?
Some, correct.
Some. So could we look at changing how we're funding this one? So you find a different road to use state aid funding on and use the sales tax dollars on this?
Ms. Tyke, would the problem with that still be, we'd have to turn back federal funds, that we would have still the same problem with the next project?
Correct. We would still be giving back federal funds, which, again, doesn't necessarily help your chances in the future of securing federal funds, and that is my one big concern. I have lots of big concerns with this, but that's one big concern. We have future projects. And again, I do want to stress that the standards that these roads are built to are based on safety standards. And although, like I said, Commissioner Bertram pointed out, he doesn't remember anyone ever hitting a power pole, it, it may just be that we've been lucky thus far. So we would still have those concerns with the amount of traffic, building those roads to certain safety standards.
How close are they to the center line right now?
They are roughly 36 feet from center line.
And moving the road, because you're reconstructing it, that would be more expensive then?
We do have some poles on both sides of the road.
That's part of the challenge. It's unfortunate. So a question, I mean, clearly, all of us, including you, are unhappy with this. I appreciate what you were suggesting, Commissioner Bertram, about bringing XL in. Honestly, they're not going to negotiate with us in a boardroom. This is what their price of doing business is. Having said that, part of the reason why I was asking about a letter, which would have to have some follow-up, because you're right, I mean, who, who else is going to get to it in corporate? My past experience legislatively with them is, you can get to the right person pretty quickly through governmental affairs, so we might be able to do that in terms of, this is ridiculous, and in good faith, as you're working with us, what else can we be doing? We're sending a signal, recognizing, we don't have a lot of cards, as it were, right now, right? Our, our hand in this particular one isn't great, but because we know there's other pieces out there. And in contrast to Stern's Electric, this is significantly more expensive. So that's why I'm asking the question. And I, I only would even suggest that if we deny it, if we believe we'd be bringing it back because there's just too much at stake with this road. I get that. Personally, I get that. There's part of me that doesn't want to. I used to split votes with my sleepmate in the legislature at times, and right now, I kind of want to split a vote with somebody because I'm both really frustrated, and this is wrong, and yet I know we need to move forward. So I'm trying to find some other way to move forward. Commissioner Notch?
Well, this is just my opinion on, you know, making this move forward. If you look at the federal dollars that we're getting, basically, it's going to pay for majority of XL's pole issue. So if you look at the last bid you just got, that was $2 million, roughly below engineer's estimate, you could also look at, if we get the same opportunity next year, where we really out much because of the federal dollars, let's say, paid for the XL portion of it, if we can come in with a good estimate on the engineers, did we realistically, yeah, we still lost, but we probably didn't lose as much.
So what's your recommendation of what we do today?
Well, I guess I would move approving Jody's request.
And send a letter?
Reluctantly.
And send it a letter?
And sending the letter.
All right. There's a motion to approve the request and to send a letter. Is there a second?
I don't think there's enough sugar to make the medicine go down, but I don't think we have a choice. I'd like to vote against it as well, Commissioner Bertram, so, but I will second it reluctantly.
We have a motion and a second. I too would like to vote against it. I think you just said it quite well, Commissioner Persky. I've been hearing an awful lot of that song lately with our granddaughter, Junie. Perhaps I need to start singing it more myself. Say no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
And I think we need to take roll call.
Commissioner Ber...
Commissioner Bertram?
No.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bertram, I just want to say part of your no, I'm with you. If you could help us with a strongly worded letter.
I will get a letter to Chair Clark, and I can certainly, once we work out the final language, we can certainly copy the rest of the board when that letter gets sent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Environmental Services, we have, we actually, the next part of our meeting has, we have a resolution to request local water management plan extension, and then we're also getting our annual Agriculture and Water Resources Division update. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I have staff with me, and I will let Becky introduce her staff and herself, and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Becky Schlurf, Ag and Water Resources Division Supervisor, and I have with me Kyle Blazek, Environmental Specialist. If it would be okay, I'd like to switch the agenda items and do G2 first?
That would be, that's fine, unless anybody has, I'm not seeing any objection. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is the update of the Ag and Water Resources Division, and I'm going to start with the wetland program. The county is mandated to do the Wetland Conservation Act, and all but one jurisdiction within our county has allowed delegation of their role with the Wetland Conservation Act, except the City of Sartell. So these numbers are for the entire Sterns County, except for the City of Sartell. We provide services of wetland determinations, and then we review consultant delineations and approvals for those. We do exemptions of the WACA where allowed. We approve replacement plans, and we do banking applications, as well as investigate complaints and deal with violations with our partner agencies. So like a number of contacts is the best way of looking at the workload, and so the average five years is 906 contacts. So for 2003, we were down a little bit. Wetland violations, we were down again in 2003, so that is good news. They do take a lot of time, and we actually did have 23 investigations, so it's more than just the three that you see here as far as violations or informal resolutions. So some of those investigations did prove to be invalid complaints, but also some of them met exemptions or are still currently in the works of being resolved. We also, as I said earlier, do replacement plans and banking plan applications, so the numbers were down again in 2003. We do, however, have five banking plans in the works right now, and as many of you know, those do take, or can take several years to finish. And as you may be aware, the credits in the bank service Area 7 that we are in are low and expensive, and that is not changing. In 2003, that continued to increase in price. So for instance, in 2014, the credits were selling for around 96 cents per square foot. We are up to $2.50 per square foot at this time. If there aren't any questions on wetlands, I'll continue into the feedlot program. The feedlot numbers in general are staying overall consistent. However, when you look at the fourth or fifth line down, the state-funded total, what we get, we're delegated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and our funding is based on the number of sites that meet that criteria. So that number is declining, but that's across the state, so our funding isn't necessarily declining in proportion to other counties. But our number of feedlots are staying about the same. The same trend is still there. The number of sites decreasing are the small and mid-sized, and then the ones increasing are the super small ones, and then the larger sites. The dotted line is showing the sites that the delegated program does not fund, so. Our county permits, our county and state permits that we issue did increase, or is up there a little bit, I guess. Our five-year average is 74 permits. We did have five variances and five CUPs as well in 2003. And then the days to issue and the permits issued, so you can kind of, it kind of has a little bit of a trend. The more permits we are issuing, the little bit longer it can take, but on average, overall, for an annual basis, is 20 business days to issue a permit. Right now, at the beginning of the year, of course, we're at 10 business days. It's slower, and the workload is less at this time of the year, and that often impacts the amount of time it takes. Feedlot noncompliance, so this is related to open lot runoff or liquid manure storage area compliance. The number has not changed much in the last year, and as some of you might know, the funding for feedlots has decreased, and the cost for fixes has increased. The funding is aimed more towards climate smart and soil health these days, more so than feedlot. But our noncompliance is mostly in that 100 to 299 animal unit category, and then there's a slight increase that over time that's occurred in the 10 to 49 animal unit category, and those are ones that the state does not fund us for, but we still work with them. Our manure record noncompliance is at about 40%. So in all, about 62% of the feedlots in Sterns County have to keep records of manure, where they apply the manure, what date, the application rate, et cetera. We've reviewed about 63% of those that are required to have records, and 40% are noncompliant. So as time is going on, we're reviewing more and more of them, the compliance rate is still of concern. We did just have a meeting with our Soil and Water Conservation District yesterday, and they are informing us that they have more money available for manure management planning, so we'll be trying to get that word out to help with that. And then this is kind of looking forward just a little bit, at least with the feedlot program. County staff are still actively involved in our Minnesota Association of County Feedlot Officers, various teams, including the new MPCA Continuous Improvement Project. And then, as you might have realized as well, in this biennium, we did get some more funding from the legislature, but it's a one-time deal. So we did get more money for 2024, 25. Beginning this year, the MPCA will be doing all of our engineer reviews, so that will save our staff time, and we're not expecting to have any change in the permit issuance timing with that. And then this year as well, late this year, the MPCA will be developing an online manure management program for the larger sites that they have jurisdiction over, but we expect that over time, that'll be made available to others as well, so that'll hopefully prove helpful in the future. And as you may know, there are also early conversations regarding rule changes, and that's to better address the nitrates in the drinking water. We did just have our annual conference last week, and we're hearing from the state that they're expecting that to be a several years-long process, so. And then Kyle can speak on the watershed, one watershed, one plan.
So we have, as you probably know, many, four different watersheds running through the county. The North Fork's the one that's furthest along, and then the Sauk River, we act as fiscal agent for, and that one's now in its second, or just starting its second biennium. And that takes up the majority of, or the biggest chunk of our county. The Mississippi River St. Cloud Watershed is, should be finalizing their plan this year and starting early next year. And then the Mississippi River Sartell is, should be starting the planning process this spring, starting with the We Are Water event that we, hosted by Sterns County SWCD, that we are a partner with. The exhibit's held at Art in Motion on the Lake Wobegon Trail. As you can see, the dates there, April 25th through June 17th. There'll be many different events promoting water quality throughout, a lot of stories, events, and actions for water quality throughout the county. So AIS last year, I came in midway through the program, but we had, as you can see, a little bit less hours, but our hours, inspections per hour was up slightly. So a little bit less hours was due to same funding every year, and the price of inspections going up every year, but it shows a little bit of focus on when those inspectors are out there. So, yeah, seven different lakes for control activities. Yeah, the committee's very active, sorry. But again, increasing cost of inspections is our biggest concern with the same budget every year, or similar budget every year. For 2024, we're trying to implement new AIS tool stations. They're pretty inexpensive, and they're just a big, a sign at the launch that includes a brush and a grabber, or whatever really the lake associations want to use. That's what we recommended to them, and those are starting to be implemented. I believe we have 11 going out right now, and trying to get another 14 more this year at launches. So new infestations, there were five lakes. Three of them were the Sauk Chain of Lakes for Eurasian Water Mill Foil, which is expected since that's a moving water body. So hoping to limit the spread of that through the exterior, I guess, the ones that aren't connected to the main channel. And then Clearwater got Starry Stonewort, which we helped with their first control early, or late last year, and then Pine Lake got Zebramuscles as well.
And I think that is all that we have for the update. Are there any questions regarding the update?
Commissioner Bertram?
On the lake, on the, I'm not real clear, I'm seeing several different lakes here, and you don't have to do that today, but I'd like a summary of which lakes have we been working with, how do lakes get on that list? Some of that information would be helpful.
For control?
Are you talking about AIS?
Yes.
Yeah. And actually, you probably got some good information, you have, it's a pretty incredible, I mean, in terms of what the lake associations do, and then we've got this citizen group that comes together, that's, we're pretty unique in the state. It's pretty, they're robustly engaged, and it would be pretty awesome if the state would free up some more dollars to do, to supplement the work they're doing. Would that be a fair way of saying it? Until, until very recently, we, I got to serve on their award panel that was just at the end, so I'm still getting to be engaged a fair amount, and I think this whole board would, would be interested in occasionally seeing just some information about just the lakes, but what they're doing.
And then to add on that, Madam Chair, is there's lakes that are doing their efforts all by themselves. Correct?
Yes, some, some are doing much more than, they are getting some funds from, from the county, but that's probably just a drop in the bucket of what they're doing. The Sauk Chain might be one of those, even though we fund management fairly high over there, they're still putting a ton of effort out there, and Coronas would be another one. But yeah, we run an AIS committee that's very led by the citizens, and they make a lot of different decisions for that, and then we go through a full, I think about 90% of our funding goes out for RFP. So lake associations through the whole county can apply to that. We do get, tend to get the same ones, which are more active lake associations.
And Madam Chair, if you can identify the ones where the lakes are pretty much heading it up, they may be funded, but they're kind of heading up, identify those two if you can.
And I think it would be fair to say they're all heading up their own initiatives, working together collaboratively, the ones that are getting money with the county. But I think that, I just wanted you to know that as you're thinking about, but as you can hear, some more information would be really helpful.
And then, Madam Chair, on the manure management, the noncompliance, am I understanding that right, are mostly due to records, the record-keeping?
Correct. The manure record-keeping is where we tend to see some struggle as far as keeping the records at all, or just having an accurate, up-to-date manure test, or the full spectrum of the requirements of the state, meaning the date it was applied and the rate. And the carryover nitrogen is a big one, if you have people to calculate that second year nitrogen credit.
Madam Chair, what would be the second most common violation, other than record-keeping?
Probably open lot runoff, still, yep.
And I assume the soil conservation is made aware of that, or that they could go out potentially, visit with the producer and say, we can help you with this, or?
Correct. The Soil and Water Conservation District gets our data twice a year, so they have all the compliance information with that. And yes, they would be able to do that. Typically, though, it's staff doing a feedlot inspection, compliance inspection, identifying, reidentifying an issue, and referring them to the Soil and Water Conservation District. Now, that person may or may not contact or reach out, and there are also statute protections. So even if they do reach out and, and apply for the funding available, if they do not get granted 75% cost share, there's statute protections for them, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just going to mention too, you know, some of these lakes have lake improvement districts, which, you know, I know going to like North Fork Watershed meetings, Peers Lake, Lake Coronas, you know, they're both really active organizations as far as working with all the AIS and trying to combat all these issues. So yes, for Commissioner Bertram, there are a lot of, you know, private entities that are trying to help their local bodies of water, you know, be cleared up, you know, along with getting AIS dollars, so. But it's a challenge. It's got a lot of lakes to deal with. Thank you.
Yeah, both of you, excellent points. Commissioner Persky, did you have anything?
No, I'm fine. I'm frustrated with the problems that we have with the evasive species.
Yes, it's frustrating, and the people-powered part of the resources are amazing, and yet we don't have a whole lot of other great tools there to be supplementing that. That is, that is a frustration.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, one thing we've worked well as far as improving the quality of water, but this has been a challenge that has come to us, that, you know, trying to keep those critters and those plants from attacking us has been a challenge.
Absolutely, absolutely. Would you please thank broadly the staff, not who just put this together, but the work that's being done? It's pretty immense and critical to the vitality of the region, so thank you.
Yep.
All right, now to your other items.
So the G1 item is on packet page 82, and this is looking for a resolution or to adopt a resolution to request an extension of the Sterns County Comprehensive Local Water Management Plan. As you know, we have the one watershed, one plan process, and we've gone through, or are going through that for three of the four watersheds within Sterns County right now, and that results in the adoption of a comprehensive watershed management plan in those areas. The last one that we have is the Mississippi Sartell Watershed, which Kyle explained is going to be beginning the, the planning process here shortly. However, there's not enough time to get that done before our water plan, our local water plan for the county is due. So we're looking to pass the resolution for an extension, and then once the Mississippi Sartell plan is adopted, the county will no longer need a local water management plan any longer.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Persky, thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. It's almost unfortunate that we have to do that, since they know we're in process, but thank you for putting in that extra work. You're welcome. Okay, turning it over to Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have the airport commissioner here.
Yes, and thank you both for being so patient. We appreciate it. It's good to see you both here.
You have the director, Bill Towle, and Board Chair, Ryan Myers, and we're having technical difficulties, so you're going to use my laptop.
You got it, thank you.
If you could just click, it'll go.
You got it.
Like you could use the mouse.
Perfect.
Well, they're working on that, I'll get started.
Excellent, thank you.
So, thank you Chair Clark and Commissioner Bertram, Persky and Notch for having us here today. Just a little bit of history lesson here. This board approved in 2020 the formation of the St. Cloud Airport Authority, and we began operations on January 1st, 2022. So that's just a little history lesson of how we got to today. So one of the things, Bill is our airport director, absolutely an outstanding human being, great director. We have a mighty staff of eight at the St. Cloud Airport, and they are some, some wonderful people. I might add also that Administrator Williams has been a great resource for me as board chair, and I really appreciate that, you know, over the years, as, as we've been grappling with various issues. Doing a governmental startup is kind of a new one, but I got to do one, so that was cool. So thank you for that opportunity. So as we look at, at the St. Cloud Airport, and one of the things that's really important to keep in mind is, you know, the whole point of why we did this. important to keep in mind is, you know, the whole point of why we did this. The economic impact back when we did this was $49 million of annual economic impact. And so as we've been thinking about our work, it's always with that in mind and, and that'll, as I get into the presentation, you'll see that. But another, I guess, something I'm grateful for, Stearns County appointed David Weers originally to the board, and he did just an outstanding job being a jet pilot. He really had, had a lot of great input into the formation, at the formation stage. And then Marshall Graham's is your other appointee, and he is a member of the Air National Guard. And he is a Blackhawk pilot, and so the perspective that he brings is great. And then Craig Blonigan, our latest person that's on the board, really brings a great business perspective. And I can say the three counties in the city just did a great job of appointing board members. I mean, we work well as a team, thoughtful. The idea was is to run as a business and that's what we're doing. So I think you can applaud yourself for your appointments. The, as we look at our, our vision, you know, the St. Cloud Regional Airport strives to be the regional airport of choice for both the Northwest Metro and Central Minnesota. One of the big things that we found when we did our market study was the Northwest Metro is where there's a lot of action, a lot of people that direction. So when we look at service, it makes sense that you focus not only on Central Minnesota, but that Northwest Metro, because if you're going to maximize the economic impact, a lot of it is that direction. Our mission is to provide quality air transportation services for, that safely connect users to their destinations while driving economic growth and prosperity in those two areas. So that's really important. Our core values, obviously safety and service. If you've used the St. Cloud Airport, I think you can, it's a testament to the service, the quality of Bill's team. And then safety. Those eight people out there do an amazing job in terms of the safety of, of passengers and, and what's happening at the airport. And when it comes to transportation access, we offer transportation services for all users, including commercial air service, which is Allegiant. And then general aviation, we have 100 airplanes that are hosted or that live at, at the St. Cloud Airport. And then the, the National Guard has 12 Blackhawk and Chinook helicopters based there. So half the National Guard fleet is located at the St. Cloud Regional Airport. And then one thing that I don't know that a lot of people realize is the, the amount of precious cargo that goes through there. Everything from human organs for organ transplants to, we've had plane loads of pets go out of there. I'm not sure the deal, but there's, there's, you know, everybody's into pets. Well, we, we transport pets out of there and medical equipment, all kinds of other cargo. So it's not a huge economic line, but when you think about the impact on farmers and everybody else, it's, it's huge. So, and then obviously we want to be a welcoming place, and so that's, that's our community and culture aspect. And so this last year, we, we worked with our consultant, Meeden Hunt, to do a strategic plan. And in that effort, we came up with six organizational strategic objectives that guide our actions and, and what we're doing going forward. So they start off with exploring our financial enhancement and revenue opportunities. And one of the things that we want to do is to make sure that, that 1,400 acres where the St. Cloud Regional Airport sits, that we're maximizing the opportunity for revenue enhancement there so that the burden on taxpayers is minimized. And so that's a kind of a key, key part of how we look at, look at the airport. And so very important to diversify revenue. One of the things we did is we've increased rents and fees, including pay for parking. And that now generates over $200,000 a year. And if you've been out there normally in March, there used to be cars parked out on the county road. Now there, we have plenty parking and yet we're also generating revenue. So it's, it's been a big win-win for both the public having a place to park and for the airport in terms of not having to spend a couple million bucks on expanding a parking lot. The other thing is, is we've got a lot of big equipment. If you look at the snow removal equipment and all of the pieces of equipment that Bill's staff has to use to maintain and keep things safe, we need to be running it better from the standard of fiscally to be building replacement reserves, et cetera, for that equipment, because some of that stuff dates back to the eighties. So it's very important that we're building those financial reserves as we go forward for replacement. The other thing is, is right as the airport was being formed, the city of St. Cloud put in sewer and water, so we were able to expand the shovel-ready part of the airport for additional private hangars. And so that asset is there. So we've been working with local banks to understand, like if we needed to provide financing or to encourage more private hangars to be built. So that's an effort that's underway. And then obviously the, we've been working with the local EDAs, the county EDAs, city EDAs, to make sure that this STC supports business recruitment and retention. And one thing I can tell you is the amount of big corporate jets flying in and out of St. Cloud, it's, it's increasing dramatically. And so it's a sign that, that the corporations in the area are definitely finding value in the St. Cloud Regional Airport. The other thing is, is as we look at, the next thing is expanding air transportation services. Now, years ago, obviously there was the whole United effort to have daily air service. You're not going to see that anytime soon. That is not something we're focused on. We're too close to MSP for that. But Allegiant flies a lot of flights out of there. We've got 36,000 passengers that fly, that in 2023 flew out of St. Cloud, which is up dramatically since 2020, obviously with the pandemic. And so we continue to look for additional destinations. Right now, we've got Punta Gorda and Mesa that people fly to from, and from, from the St. Cloud Airport. And then Sun Country flies private charters out of there as well. So that accounts for the, for the number of passengers going in and out in terms of, of commercial air service. The other thing is, is besides Allegiant, is growing general aviation. And so to enhance that, obviously, we're, we're continuing to work to support general aviation and we, we're constructing a new T-hanger. We had a waiting list for hangars. There, there are no hangars available within 60 miles. So we're, we're building a new T-hanger, which will, will open this, this summer. We'll likely have a kind of open house event for that, so we'll be inviting you to that. So you can see what we did there. And, and then also the Army National Guard, obviously with their presence there, it's really important that we have a good relationship with them. And having Marshall on the board is, is great in that regard. At some point, it's, it's possible, in our view, that the, the National Guard may need to move its entire helicopter operation out of Holman Field in St. Paul. Well, we'd like it to be in St. Cloud. So that, that, because you got to remember, there's 70, is it 30 or 70 full-time jobs? 70.
70.
70 full-time jobs plus the 300 weekend warriors that come on weekends that train there. So I mean, it's a, it's a big economic impact. The other thing is unemployment and talent, because when, when you have a staff of eight, you better treat them well and you better make sure you're developing them properly. So we have a whole part of our strategic plan meant to, to deal with that. When we've had openings, we get lots of applicants, so I think we've built the right culture in terms of, of acquiring talent. We hired an assistant director, so we now have sustainability succession for Bill, which is really important. And then enhancing best, best-in-class aviation facilities, and this is a big one. So without forming the, the air authority, there's no way that we would have been able to get the legislature to appropriate $4 million last year to our ILS and approach lighting system. That was, that equipment is dated back to the eighties. I mean, definitely in need of replacement. When the airport, when the runway was extended by 500 feet, that, that equipment was not relocated to accommodate that 500 feet. So we can't really use all 7,500 feet of the runway, just 7,000. So very important that we get that. And so the combined, that combined project, which will be happening over the next couple of years, is $6 million. $4 million from the legislature, a million from the FAA, a million, and a million from Min dot aviation. So that was a big deal. The other thing is, is in the air traffic control tower, we got a federal grant for $500,000 there to replace all the radios, and so that's all up to speed. So again, I don't know that we would have gotten that if it had still been part of the city of St. Cloud. So that's a lot of federal dollars and state dollars that came to the region because we have an air authority. The, as I mentioned earlier, we did not have to extend, extend the parking lot, and we've got the, the construction of the new T-hanger going on. And then we do look at 2024, 25 as doing some rebranding of the St. Cloud Regional Airport to, to again, better communicate what we can do out there and what's happening. And then a big one that I mentioned is also on the equipment point, is we have a firetruck that was obsolete and we received a federal grant and also state money to, for 1.6 million to replace that. So that was a big deal. And then the other thing is, is the FBO, the fixed-based operator, if you're not familiar with those terms, that's the, the St. Cloud Aviation, they refuel the planes, operate the line out there. And so it's really important that we have a good relationship with them and that we know that they're serving the, the customers, the general aviation and corporate customers of the airport well. So we've been really working on that relationship and making sure they're supporting the airport and we're supporting them. And we know that the, that part of the house needs fixing at some point, so we're, we're working out a plan on how to, how to deal with that as far as the arrival and departure building for private, private aircraft. And then lastly is, is the whole engagement with the community to make sure we've got support for airport operations. So these annual reports to stakeholders are part of what we're doing. And then also we're exploring airshow, airshow again, that's a great way to promote air, air service and what's going on at the airport, and then community open houses, et cetera, so that we're just a good neighbor for the community. And then lastly, something that we're really proud of is we've been working with Commissioner Gartland, who's the vice chair of the MAC, and with St. Cloud Technical College, Delta, Cirrus and, and Sun Country, to bring an AMP program, aircraft mechanic program, so to the St. Cloud Airport. So we've been working very closely with them and with the legislature. We've got full legislative support from our local delegation. Any support that the board can, can offer to support that initiative would be great. Those jobs, think about this, a two-year program at the tech college, starting wages 35 bucks an hour, within five years, they're making $65 an hour. So these are great jobs and something that's really needed. And so Delta's very serious about this and sort of the other airlines. So that's my report, and I'm really thankful to Stearns County for your support. And do you have any questions for Bill or I?
Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Brian, for that report. Just curious if at some point we'll see a financial report on how the airport is doing?
Certainly.
You know, it would be interesting, you know, being it's two years roughly now.
Yep, yep.
See kind of where you started and where it's progressing to.
Yeah, and, and you know, it's, it's, we're trying to maximize revenue, but there is an expense problem there.
Right.
You know, and so we, we're trying to, my approach has been, how do we maximize the revenue out of there? So again, least burden on taxpayers, but at some point there will be a levy.
Right. And that's, Madam Chair, that's kind of what I wanted to see the progression.
No, there will.
Because I know there was no parking fees initially and that got instituted, which...
Soon as we could do it.
So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And I had a similar question. It'll be good to see how it goes. I mean, I know, you know that this board was very concerned about what happens at the end of 10 years and, you know, what, what is happening with that? So that would be...
And I mean, we're even exploring things like solar, you know, there's, there's, you know, everything, we've got 1,400 acres, we're obviously not using all of it. How do we maximize the impact of all of that so that we, again, do the best job, provide a safe experience, but make sure that we, you know, are, are well-run, safe and secure, but fiscally responsible?
Commissioner Persky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a number of questions and concerns. Brian, and first of all, thank you for your work there. It's greatly appreciated. I was pleased to see you step forward to take that position, so.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. And Bill, too, thank you for your efforts out there. You know, oftentimes we're working cooperatively. You know, we go out to DC, whether it be for the APO, Transportation Alliance, and we know that the St. Cloud Airport is important, you know, as far as viability of air, air transportation, and that's part of it as well. So it's always good that we're communicating so that we can be advocates, you know, for the airport for us, so that we, we've done that a number of times, and I want to make sure that we continue to do that. And I can only see that as something that's going to continue to grow. One of the issues with that is, of course, is the river crossing. And that river crossing, I think, is going to change the airport and St. Cloud considerably and Stearns County as well. So we're working at promoting that river crossing, and we would like to make sure that, you know, we're working cooperative to, to let at least the legislature and our folks in DC know that that's an important thing. That's going to be considerable growth for Sherburne County, but also just the opportunities that it does also for the St. Cloud School District, the St. Cloud Tech, the, the economic viability because of being able to cross the river there for 94, and then just passenger traffic too. People can quickly get across there, that that will increase the traffic flow for, for passenger traffic. So working together on that, I think, would be huge. I was excited to hear you mention about St. Cloud Community College. That was my question that I had written down here. So anything we can do to foster that, to get that move forward will be great. I don't know if the, the college has, has thought about, you know, reinstituting a program at all, but maybe future that might happen as well. But education-wise, yeah, I think we've got some great opportunities there. So thank you for your work in those things, and let's continue to work cooperatively.
Thank you.
Mr. Bertram?
Madam Chair, I wasn't on the board when the board decided to partner with the Regional Airport. Thank you first and foremost for running it like a business, because I can tell you the concern is, you know, it's going to become a deep hole, and we certainly don't want that. Charging for parking a reasonable fee of 15 bucks a day is reasonable.
It's seven.
Is it seven? Were you overpaid then? I'll talk to you about that. No, I'm kidding. I don't, I don't pay attention to the detail. Maybe it was because of the length of state.
It's a good idea, though.
But very reasonable and, but thank you for running it as a business. And there's just something odd getting used to going through TSA and being called by first names and knowing the people that are doing it, there's a different feeling. I always ask people, where are you from? And it is amazing how much of that regional, you know, towards the cities impact there, there is. And again, continue to capitalize on that. Have you worked with the other airports in Stearns County? Do you meet with them? Do you say, what can we do for you, with you? The mechanic program is something that they're working on in Painesville. They've got a couple hangar spots open. If you haven't done that, let me plant that seed, because again, the tide rises all boats. And if you can, you know, we've got Painesville, you've got Bruton, you've got Sock Center. There may be things that you can do that are not in competition that will benefit them and potentially benefit you. So if you haven't done that, I'd encourage you to do that.
I'll let Bill comment on that.
You know what, we, we haven't done a lot of that yet. There was another concern of Sherburne County as well with Princeton being in Sherburne County. So there's some of these other airports, and that's something to, to consider in the future. However, I did go and talk to Sock Center. I went up and met with them, just, they were, they were just talking about kind of, just had a lot of questions about airport mechanics and things like that. In terms of mechanic school, I mean, again, Chair Myers here really has been the, really the driving force behind that to make sure that it's getting, that's potentially going to be out at the airport, so those kind of things. We'd certainly be more than willing to help any airport that, that is in our jurisdiction or not. Minneapolis, St. Paul International Airport is very helpful. To the other commercial service airports like us, we'd be happy to then do that with other, you know, smaller airports, you know, as well.
That's great.
Madam Chair, I would encourage you to do that. And on the, on the whole issue of just expansion and, you know, getting these additional services and everything, if we can, I, I haven't seen any requests and, you know, with the Blackhawk and also other potential partnerships. and also other potential partnerships, I mean, allow us to do letters or resolutions in encouraging that to happen, and letting us know who we should be contacting to help make that happen, because, yep, the regional, if it's going to be a regional airport, let's make it a regional airport. And the same thing with the airshow. Painesville does an outstanding airshow. Work with them, they can work with you. You know, again, you're not in competition with each, with each other. I assume that FAA, FAA does the same 90, 95%, you know, the funds.
Right. 95 and 5, yeah.
Yep, and, and that's great, again, for the, all, you know, for all airports. That's, that's certainly been me the priority, and that's good to hear. So, thank you for the report.
And it'll be great to be having that back. And COVID obviously changed a whole lot of things. Recognizing the time and really appreciate you being here. I just do want to thank you for your ongoing work. It's been a pleasure to get to work and partner with you for a very long time, and our voices, as Commissioner Bertram just said, if we can be helpful, let us know how. I've got a chance to talk recently with President Cluse about the mechanics program. That makes a lot more sense for our region than what St. Cloud State used to have, and partially because of cost, but it also is something that hopefully, once it gets going, there's going to be an opportunity for internships and, in, in many places that are nearby. So, again, not competition, but being able to help with that. And on its own, SETCC draws from about a 30-mile radius. It can be expanded, really, with this, this program. And Joe, really appreciate, Commissioner Persky, you bringing up about the bridge, as we continue to be seeing how our, our region can be as vital as possible, the multimodal, the connectors, all of those pieces continue to be so important. So, thank you, thank you again, and, and please do let us know what we can do to be helpful, and, and if there's an opportunity to go up in one of those Blackhawks again, I haven't been in one for a while, those are pretty amazing.
I have no sway in that.
I know you don't. We have ways to get to them.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are getting near the end, and know that our, our township friends are coming in for our next meeting. Dr. Williams, this is, we are moving on to our Housing Trust Fund Board, making our appointments.
You are, Madam Chair. Your, your task for this agenda is twofold. This agenda item is twofold. One is to, the, the Housing Trust Fund is made, is made up of seven members, two of them appointed by the HRA, three appointed by this board, and two from, two members from this board. So, the, the HRA has made its appointments, and so, your task is twofold today. One is to pick two of your own members to be on the Housing Trust Fund, and choose three from the 10 applicants that we received. As you were asked to do, you did it well. You, you did your rankings, and, and I summarized those results for you of the, of your ranking of the, of the 10. And if you kind of look at those, there, there are some commonalities throughout, but I, I focused on those where you, where you chose, who, which of those people were chosen most in the top two, and those would be three candidates. If you want me to keep summarizing that, we'll, or if you want to have discussion, but that was candidates H, I, and G. Those candidates are from districts four and five. The HRA appointees are from district two and three, and so, I, I did highlight that for you. Of course, you can make any appointments you want from those 10, but I just wanted to do a quick summary of, of your, of how you rank them in there. So, and as, as you know, these are not finalists yet, so that's why we're referring to them with a letter rather than their names. If you would choose to interview, say you've got four or five, or however number of candidates, we would release the name of those candidates as finalists, so, but until we have finalists, we, we don't release the name.
So, Dr. Williams, we've got, so we've got two pieces. One is doing, doing our, our two members, and then, as far as the others, members, if we, we can make a decision today on those, if you choose. If somebody wants to make a, a motion on that, we also, if we want to, we can set up a subcommittee to make recommendations, back to the word, as Dr. Williams said, if we want to do a larger group. So, a question I have is, how, how would you like to proceed? Commissioner Natch?
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess, the way Mr. Williams has it laid out, I'd be okay making those appointments as they're presented, and if that's what we so choose, we can announce the names, I would guess, after we approve it.
After we do it. So, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, you know, to get the ball going, I guess.
Okay, so...
And this will be just for the member, we will figure ours out as a secondary.
We can do it either way. I think people know that both Commissioner Bertram and myself have expressed interest in those positions, so I don't know which, if you want to do us first and do them, or how you want to. And, and if one of you, I am more than happy if somebody else wants to.
Well, I guess my motion would be just to approve these appointments first.
Let's do those three first. That sounds fine.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is to appoint candidates H, I, and G to the Housing Trust Board.
Madam Chair, it should, you know, I think, kind of what's hot on, but there was a very process going through the applications, doing the ranking, so, again, this isn't a flip it thing.
No, no.
I mean, we've worked through this for the last three weeks of doing, reading the applicants. Great that we had 10 applicants, there's a lot of interest, but we went through that wherewithal of getting it to where it is now.
Absolutely. Very good thing to be pointing out, and excellent, excellent candidates, some of who are already engaged with the county, some that hopefully they will see other opportunities for doing so in the future. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. And Dr. Williams, after you've gotten a chance to let those folks know, then we can say it publicly, correct? Okay. All right, now let's go ahead and discuss which of us are going to be doing it.
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd just like to weigh in on the issue. I do think that we're looking at, you know, the entire county, so I would feel it'd be appropriate if we had somebody from the urban area and from the rural area to represent folks on that board. So, so with that, you, you had alluded that you have an interest, and Commissioner Bertram has an interest, so we have one from the city and one from the rural areas. I would have no problem supporting that, so.
Is that a motion?
That, that would be a motion to approve you two for that board.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, Dr. Williams, we have a board, and obviously, we will be working with this board, right? Because that's going to be a really important thing, if you're having ideas or saying things along the way. Let's make sure we, we, we take that into consideration.
Yes, notifications will be made, and our HRA director is anxious to get started.
Yes, please tell, tell Mr. Fortier that we're going to be excited, and Jeff serves on that board, so it'll be nice also having you being a part of, part of that as well.
And Madam Chair, just on that point, I, I would assume you're going to help a little bit him at first. Some counties don't do it the way I understand this is. This board will make the final approval. Some boards are doing recommendation to the full board, but this is, this board is going to make the final approval, right? So, just to help, you know, Neil kind of work through that at first, I hope you're going to be guiding him, because this is new for everybody.
Right, I agree with that. It, it wasn't really a concern, but I know that, that several of the other places are, their boards are figuring out the implementation and, or, or have some process, so there may be an opportunity, perhaps, just suggesting that Mr. Fortier at least brings it back to the rest of our board is hearing and seeing, and that we're all on the same page while they do make the final determinations. And your assistance, obviously, will be really helpful. Well, members, we're right near the end, and then we'll get to move to have our next meeting. So, issues by Commissioner, Commissioner Bertram?
Nothing. Great leadership conference that the Chair and I attended. Other than that, a lot of activity in our committees and everything, nothing specific.
Okay, great. Commissioner Natch?
Oh, yeah, I just, to let everyone know, I did attend the Sheriff's Ignite introduction last week, which was really an interesting program that the sheriff and the jail have coming forward. The virtual reality instruments that they'll provide were, were really informative. I, I think, you know, if it's a chance, maybe get some inmates to improve their lives, you know, by using some of this technology, I think it'll be a plus, you know, for, for hopefully keeping our jail population down and recidivism down. And then, the only other thing I have is, you know, the city of St. Cloud appointed me to the RSVP, Retired Senior Volunteer Program, so we have a meeting at Whitney on Thursday.
Right?
So, we'll see how...
Welcome to District One.
Yeah, well...
Oh, you're swearing.
We're trying to, trying to get District Five, the rural area, more involvement.
So important, especially because wonderful staff that still talks about, as if the middle of the county was the edge of the county. So, please help them with that.
Thanks.
Great, great. Commissioner Persky?
Just a couple of things. First of all, with the HRA appointments, again, you had mentioned the quality of candidates that we had, and it's always good to see quality people step forward to, to serve the county. There were a good number of people there that weren't selected, but, you know, there might be other opportunities for them to, to help, and we certainly appreciate them putting their application in. And, and then also, I was pleased to see somebody at the di, or, at the desk out front here. So, we're going to, Dr. Williams, have somebody available here at the desk, I believe, at, at this facility, because I know we get a lot of folks that come in and are a little bit maybe disoriented or confused about services or what to get and want to help, so I'm pleased to see that, and just let people know our doors open here to be helpful.
Great, thank you. Dr. Williams or Mr. Trifles, do you have anything? Okay.
I just, I'd like to also speak to the Ignite presentation. It was very exciting, having the National Sheriff's Association, Sheriff Witt from Hennepin County, and some of their team, and a whole lot of our team. And part of what is, is exciting is the things that we're already doing, cross-departments with the community, and then those opportunities, Steve, as you were saying, to, to leverage some new ones. So, while we have, some people are there for 24 hours or 48 hours, and question is, how are we connecting them quickly? Some, it's parenting, some it might be educational programs like this, our shelter work, the, the mental health, health, it's, it's a big deal, and helping the community better understand, really, what's happening, our jail staff and partners are trying to do, so kudos back there. It's really, it was great. It was really great, and people miss good cookies, too. I just want to point that out. The Leadership Summit, I think both Commissioner Bertram and I were talking last week, and about some ways and opportunities we might be able to incorporate some of our takeaways there, so appreciate that. And then, lastly, it's hard not to mention, while it's the beginning of April, the legislature is still in session. I know that each of us have been paying attention, some to very similar things, some to different items, and it's going to be important that we continue to be circling back with our, our officials, while we're really trying to get some things done that are either maybe fixing some things from last year, or moving the ball forward on things like people who are languishing in our jails, who need to be in the state hospital, not because our jails aren't great, but because they are not treatment centers. So, that, that's something we will continue to be focused on. And with that, we are going to be adjourning, just so the public is aware, our next meeting is with our Township Officers Executive Committee, which we really appreciate the relationship with you. With that, we are adjourned.